Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 17th, 2023 at 7 o'clock. Call the meeting ordered, call the roll please, Mrs. Rossnahan.
Brockford?
Here.
Sir Curtis?
Here.
Sister Davis?
Here.
Sister Travis?
Here.
Sir Powell? Here, and we're all here. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to make an announcement that the city is having technical difficulties with their livestream. It is being recorded, and as soon as this meeting is completed, that recording will be posted, but the city again is having difficulties with their livestream. For those who are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, typified by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as our.
I'm aware of one addendum. Does anybody have any other changes before I go to the addendum? Addendum to the minute, I mean to the meeting agenda. I'm going to make a motion to replace the current certificate of staff recommendations listed as L-5 of the agenda with the replacement of certificate of staff list noted as revised L-5. That is being made to a correction in that document. Is there a motion for that, is read?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Travis, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Wall call please.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Sir Curtis?
Yes.
Brockford?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Is there any more changes to the agenda?
Can we separate?
Sorry?
Can we separate that item?
The item.
Um, I, two and three.
Eyes and administrator report. Are you talking L?
Yeah, oh, two, three, and six.
So you want two and three together?
Yeah, separate.
You want them read together?
Yeah.
So we'll read one and then two and three separate together? And then what's the other one?
What's six? If they are three, can we separate them?
We'll probably take.
Six, two, three, four.
Uh.
And one, four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Sure. Any other changes? Vote on that. So with that, again, good evening. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, May 17th, 2023. I want to first give a huge shout out to the staff and business volunteers at the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber in supporting businesses amassed over $15,000 in scholarships again this year for graduating seniors. And tonight is both an exciting and bittersweet night. We will honor 10 candidates who have earned continuing contract status through their commitment to education, our students, and their craft. We thank you for your dedication and continued success in your career. And a bittersweet farewell to 18 members of our school's family who are retiring. Collectively, they have amassed almost 400 years of service to the district. Now, if my math's not right, I didn't go to Twinsburg. It would have been right if I had gone to Twinsburg. But on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you. I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Powers for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. And as Mr. Felber already announced, the city's livestream is not working this evening, and as soon as the meeting is concluded, Mr. Gatauski will upload the video to the city's portal as they always would do. So this evening, Board, we have a number of wonderful staff members to celebrate, but before we get to that, there's a couple of announcements to make. Believe it or not, next week is the last week of the school year. I can tell you, it feels like it went really fast. I'm not sure if everybody in the audience would agree, but it certainly did seem to go fast for us. We are tired, proud of our students, and the last couple of weeks here has just been so much fun because of all the end of the year celebrations, concerts, programs, games, events. And so we thank all of you who have had a part in celebrating student's success and the success of each other as we end this school year and get ready to head out for a very well-deserved summer break. Board of Education, as you know, next Tuesday is the huge event of the Twinsburg High School commencement. It is once again held at the E.J. Thomas Hall at the University of Akron. Commencement will be livestreamed by Community Focus beginning at 7:30 PM on May 23rd. There, after the program, will be accessible via the MyCommunityFocus.org website. Additionally, we'll be posting that on our website. You can also watch the commencement videotape on Spectrum Cable 1021. And there's going to be a Community Focus graduation marathon starting Saturday, July 1st through the 4th of July. They usually do that the 4th of July holiday, and so once again, it is the marathon with our high school, with Nardonia High School, and with Aurora High School, the three school districts that are served by Community Focus. So we are very excited to celebrate with our class of 2023, and we look forward to celebrating not only with the students, but of course with their families as well. Our last day for our students will be Thursday, May 25th, and off they'll go for hopefully a very fun summer of relaxation and making lots of memories with their parents and their friends and their family. Monday, May 29th is Memorial Day, and we'll pause to remember those who have served in our country, and we are always very proud of the fact that our high school band and often many students from Wilcox Primary School are invited to participate in the Memorial Day program. So that'll be kicking off from the high school, marching its way down to our great square. And so Board of Education, tonight, as Mr. Felber indicated, is a night to celebrate a lot of amazing staff members. So I'm going to ask Mrs. McKinney to come forward. She and I usually share this great honor of celebrating our staff members here at the end of the school year, and the first group of educators that we are going to recognize are those who have earned continuing contract status. As you know, Board of Education, teaching is a very complex profession, and you really have to love working with children and be willing to do all that we can to help them learn and grow. And over the last couple of years, we recognize how very difficult it was for our students to learn through the pandemic, but our staff did an amazing job. And tonight, we are going to celebrate some of those staff members who really have done a wonderful job and have earned the rank of continuing contract status. For those of you wondering why there are fire or police cars going down the road, it is not about the Twinsburg School District. There is an event tonight honoring the police officers, and I believe they're headed to Cuyahoga Falls in a parade. And so that's what you're hearing in the background, and you can see that if you are here tonight at our board meeting. So tonight, we're going to celebrate our teachers who have reached this pinnacle in their career, earning the rank of continuing contract status. And we're going to begin with us announcing the names. When your name is announced, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, Board of Education, don't know if you want to come forward and congratulate our teachers as they receive continuing contract status. What's that? Oh, I don't know. Okay, so we're going to begin with Ms. Shelley Anderson. Shelley, if you could please come forward. Shelley became a teacher because she found education to be transformative, and she wanted to share with that with others. She feels the three most important qualities of a successful teacher are patience, passion, and empathy. Her students know that she loves to teach because she's always there for them, always shows up for them, and she puts in time and effort for them. Shelley enjoys reading, cooking, going to concerts, and traveling in her spare time. Congratulations to Shelley Anderson. Shelley, if you want to stay up here, please. We'll have the whole class up here at once.
The next teacher is Sherry Carter, current assignment literacy specialist, intervention specialist at Twinsburg High School. Are you a Twinsburg High School graduate? No. When Sherry Carter was young, she wanted to be a Jackie, but around age six, her grandpa told her she would be too tall, so she opted to line up dolls, stuffed animals, reluctant cousins, and friends, and taught lessons with a borrowed chalkboard easel. Ultimately becoming a teacher was the best decision because she loves what she does. Sherry considers the three most important qualities of a successful teacher are patience, flexibility, and being goal-oriented with intentional planning. Her students know she loves to teach by the way she talks to them and gets to know them. She also finds ways to explain ideas and concepts in a way they will understand. In her spare time, Sherry enjoys reading, hiking, and woodworking.
Our next candidate brought a special guest with her, and that is Ms. Kate Finn. Congratulations. Want to come up, Ms. Finn? Mrs. Finn has worked in our school district for nine years, and she currently teaches second grade at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Kate became a teacher because she fell in love with making a difference in kids' lives. Seeing students thrive and achieve their goals is such satisfaction for her. She always played school as a little girl. There's a recurring theme here, do you notice? Her favorite memories are seeing the happiness on her students' faces when they go to see her outside of the classroom. She also enjoys going to their concerts and performances. Kate considers the three most important qualities of a successful teacher as being patience, passion, and adaptability. Her students know that she loves teaching by her creative lesson plans that keep them engaged in learning. In her spare time, Kate loves spending time with her daughters, Sydney and Ivory. Congratulations to Kate.
The next teacher, Kate Hardisty. Her assignment is first grade. She has worked in the Twinsburg City School District for five years. Katie has had some wonderful teachers that helped shape her, and that is what inspired her to become a teacher. Her favorite classroom memory is used in Junie B. Jones's books to help her students learn not only about reading, but also life lessons. The three most important qualities of successful teachers are knowing that your learning as a teacher is never done, being caring, compassionate, and empathetic, and doing whatever is necessary to cater to every learning style. Katie's students tell her, "You make us smarter and smarter and smarter, and you always have a smile on your face." That's how they know she loves teaching. She enjoys spending time at the lake with her family and friends. Congratulations, Katie.
Our next candidate is Mrs. Alicia Henderson, who is our school counselor, eighth-grade counselor at R.B. Chamberlain Middle School. Alicia became a counselor to help students with issues that occur outside of the classroom, but that impact the student inside the classroom. Her favorite memory is starting a group for at-risk boys, and as a result, they developed a love for reading. Alicia considers empathy, creativity, and resourcefulness as the most important qualities of a successful school counselor. Her students know she loves being a counselor because she always makes time for them when they have a problem. In her spare time, Alicia enjoys being with her family, shopping, and dancing. Alicia, her two years at RBC have been very enjoyable. She is grateful for the awesome staff and students that she gets the opportunity to work with every day. Congratulations.
The next teacher is Megan Ritz. Megan has been a teacher in the Twinsburg City School District for six years. Yes, she is a Twinsburg High School graduate. Watching her parents inspire so many students is what influenced Megan to become a teacher. She has always loved working with children. Some of her favorite classroom memories are when they do the ABC countdown at the end of the school year and going on field trips. Megan feels the three most important qualities of being a successful teacher are patience, empathy, and flexibility. Her students know she loves teaching because she does her best to make learning fun and instill a love for learning. She loves having fun and will always join in, "Go noodle." In her spare time, she enjoys reading and crafting with her circuit.
Cricket.
Cricket, I'm sorry. Megan is so proud to work at her alma mater and enjoys working with so many fantastic teachers that have watched her grow from a student to a colleague. Congratulations, Megan.
Our next candidate is not here this evening, and that is Mr. Ryan Lumen. He is homesick and apologizes for not being here. Mr. Lumen is an assistant principal at our high school, and he has been here for two years. He previously had continuing contract status at Mayfield High School, and that qualifies him for continuing contract status here in our school district. Ryan became a teacher and then an administrator to make a positive impact on a student's journey in life, much like many of the teachers he had growing up. He loves to see the growth and maturity that students make from the beginning of the year to the end. He feels the three most important qualities of a successful educator are to build positive relationships, understanding each student, and leading with care. His students know that his door is always open. Good, bad, joy, or sadness, students can come to discuss what they need to with Mr. Lumen. His spare time revolves around his four boys and their sports. If not with them, you will find him on the golf course or out and about with his awesome wife, Elizabeth. Congratulations, Ryan Lumen.
Kara Miller has been a teacher in the Twinsburg City School District for six years. Yes, she is a Twinsburg High School graduate. Kara had the absolute best teachers and wanted to be just like them. She never wanted to be anything other than a teacher. Leaving school when she was little made her sad. That is the reason she became a teacher. One of her favorite classroom memories from this year, her whole class learned "Can't Help Falling in Love" by Elvis Presley and sang it start to finish randomly one day. Kara thinks the three most important qualities of being a successful teacher are flexibility, loving and willing to have a good time and be happy even on the difficult days. Her students know that she loves them because she tells her, she gives them fun activities to do, and they love her silly giggle. In her spare time, Kara loves spending time with her family and friends, going to Guardians games, and side-by-side bike riding with her boyfriend in the Cuyahoga Valley National Park. She is involved in her church, Twins Day, and is so glad to be an involved teacher. Kara loves Twinsburg, and this is her home. Congratulations, Kara.
Our next teacher to honor is Mr. Mike Pulaski, who's a sixth-grade teacher at George D. Dodge Intermediate School. The great relationships that Mike has had with past teachers is what inspired him to become a teacher. While he feels it is difficult to choose one moment in teaching, his favorite moment is watching a student experiencing the "aha" lightbulb moment. Mike feels that patience, organization, and leadership are the three most important qualities of a successful teacher. His students know that he loves teaching because they see his excitement about teaching math and its real-world implications. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his children, hiking, and watching sports. Congratulations, Mr. Pulaski.
Abigail Todd has been a teacher in the Twinsburg City School District for five years. Abigail became a teacher because she has always loved kids. After observing some special education classrooms, she knew that is what she wanted to do. Her favorite classroom memory is watching her students compete in the Special Olympics. Abigail thinks that the love for students' willingness to learn and treating each student as an individual are the three most important qualities of being a successful teacher. Her students know she loves teaching because she enjoys learning about their interests and what they have passion for. She enjoys spending time with her husband and two sons, hiking, running, and exploring outside. Congratulations, Abigail.
Board of Education, it is my honor to recommend these wonderful educators for continuing contracts here in our school district. A little later in the agenda, the Board will actually take action, but just know, my colleagues, we are so very proud of each and every one of you. We thank you for your dedicated service to the students here in our school district, and we wish you years and years and years of continued success. Thank you and congratulations. We'd like the Board of Education, if they don't mind, to take a photo with our continuing contract educators for this year. You are to pass them out, yeah? Okay, so the next group of wonderful staff members we're going to celebrate will be our retirees. And as you can see, the Board of Education has a gift for our retirees. Not all of our retirees are here this evening. Some of our full-time employees are off on vacations to fabulous places like Italy, and some were not able to make it tonight. So we're going to celebrate, we're going to read a little bit of about every one of our employees, but only so many have been able to come and join us this evening for our board meeting. So to begin, we first want to celebrate Mr. Don Cologne. Don was working for us for the district for about three years as janitor at Wilcox Primary School. He was previously employed with the Rocky River Schools in the same position. Don was always punctual, worked with others, and would follow through on any assignment. He came in during the pandemic and helped to supplement the need for extra help in cleaning our buildings. His help with moving equipment and relocating the different grades through the pandemic were positive contributions to the school and to, of course, our students' success. Don will be missed because of his go-to attitude, care for the staff, and most importantly, care for our students. And I can tell you, when we came out of the pandemic and we would have events at Wilcox Primary School, Don was always there to help us move furniture, greet our guests, and was just a wonderful ambassador for our school district. So we congratulate Mr. Don Cologne on his retirement from our school district.
Wayleen Holdeman. Wayleen has worked for the district for the last five years, teaching Chinese. She has lived in Ohio for the last 29 years. She started the Japanese program at Hiram College and the Chinese programs at Chagrin Falls, Laurel School, Hathaway Brown, and Brush High School. She also taught Japanese at Magnificat and Cleveland State University. Her favorite memory from her time at Twinsburg is the New Year's celebration in the Chinese cooking competitions. She will miss those events most when she retires. Her future plans are to return to Taiwan to visit her mom and family.
Congratulations to Wayleen. Our next retiree is the one that I mentioned is in Italy right now, and that is Mr. Ed Bash, who is a janitor over at our high school. Ed has worked for the district for 18 years, six as a substitute and as a full-time employee as a janitor at our high school. He previously worked for the Ford Motor Company Casting Plant for 38 years. Ed's favorite memory is the camaraderie of coworkers and people around the high school, plus the day he got hired to be full-time after working at Ford for all those years. Ed will miss his coworkers and all the evening activities, as well as being a contributor at the high school. Ed plans to travel. As a matter of fact, he left on May 13th for a 12-day European trip to Portugal, Spain, France, and Italy. So congratulations to Ed, and we wish him a wonderful retirement.
Deborah Bash. Deborah has worked for the district since 2011 as a bus attendant. She has too many memories to choose just one favorite. Debbie will miss the drivers and the students the most. She thinks it is wonderful to watch the students progress through the years. Debbie plans to travel, garden, and hang out with her mom in retirement. Currently, she is in Europe as well because Ed Bash is her husband. So they both retire together. So congratulations, Debbie.
Our next retiree is Pat Eustace. Pat has worked for the district for 17 years. Prior to that, he was a teacher for seven years at the Positive Education Program and for six years at the Cuyahoga County ESC as a special education supervisor. Pat's favorite memory is being on the square to get voters to vote for the levy and getting drivers to honk their horns in support. He also enjoyed working on the Blue Ribbon School Committee. Pat will miss the staff at Bissell and the students and the excellence of our school district. Pat plans to work part-time as a special education supervisor, and he plans to paint and spend time with his five-month-old granddaughter. Congratulations to Pat Eustace.
James Simon. James has worked 20 years for the district as an instructional assistant. Prior to that, he worked at the Berea Children's Home. His favorite memory is being recognized by a memorable student on Staff Recognition Day. James says that he will miss the people he works with. James plans to sell his house, buy a van, and live on the beach selling his earth. Congratulations, James.
The next retiree that we celebrate is Mr. Matt McGing. Matt has worked for the district for 20 years as our supervisor of technology. Previous to coming to the district, he worked in the private sector in technology. His favorite memories are all about the time spent with the technology team and the relationships he built along the way. Matt will miss his lunches with and relationships with the tech team. I heard those lunches are fantastic, so they say, yes. Matt plans to enjoy retirement and spend time with his family, and we wish him all the best. Congratulations to Matt McGing.
Marie De Roya. Marie has worked for the district for 25 years as the speech-language pathologist. Prior to Twinsburg, she started her career at the Hattie Larland Foundation. She also worked in Bedford schools for two years before establishing her private practice for 11 years while raising her three children. She resumed her career as a school speech-language pathologist in 1997 in Kensington Schools and transitioned to Twinsburg in 1998. Marie has many fond memories in Twinsburg, but the standout is the Veterans Day celebration that her colleagues created at Wilcox. She was in awe to see the smiles on the faces of all the veterans that appreciate Wilcox celebrating their service to our country. It is a wonderful event because of her dedicated coworkers. Marie will miss the staff that she has worked with throughout her career at Twinsburg. She has worked in many buildings in Twinsburg and has had great support and cooperation with all of the staff members she has met through the years. Marie plans to travel Italy, Hawaii, Brazil, to name a few, spend time with her family, especially her grandchildren, and friends, and golf. Congratulations, Marie.
Next, we celebrate Mr. Al Hudakovic. Al has worked at the district for 25 years as a physical education teacher and coach. He also spent time working at the Cleveland Central Catholic and Benedictine High School. His favorite memory is working with our very fine faculty and students. Al will miss all of his students and faculty members, along with everyone who makes Twinsburg High School a great place to be. Al plans to continue coaching and attend more of his grandchildren's events with his dear wife, Rose. Congratulations, Al.
Darrell Troy. Darrell began as a substitute teacher for two years and has been teaching since 1994. She previously taught kindergarten and first grade in PA before coming to Twinsburg. Darrell has many memories from her time at Twinsburg. A favorite is when she and Sandy Petras were team teaching at the beginning of their year. Students were learning how to do station rotations. At one point, she was leaning on an easel, watching the children move around the room. When she looked over, Sandy was leaning on the other side of the same easel. They burst out laughing at the same time. Darrell will miss the kids most, watching them start off as preschoolers and watching how much they grow in their independence, writing, and reading. When you look back in May at all the growth that has occurred, it is hard to believe that the change that happens in only nine months, but somehow it does each year. Darrell is planning to move to Florida at the end of May. She is planning to take up golf again and see if she can work as a supervisor for student teaching. Congratulations, Darrell.
Next, I'm honored to introduce Mrs. Kathy Holliday. Kathy has worked for the district for a total of 30 years, one year of subbing and 29 years as a full-time teacher, and she's currently teaching at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. She also spent half a year subbing for the Nardonia School District. Her favorite memory is doing pumpkin math with parents and students. Kathy will miss seeing her colleagues and her students every day. Kathy plans to be more involved with her own kids and all of the activities that they are involved in, as well as get to catch up with things around the house and spend time. and spend time with her wonderful husband. Congratulations to Kathy.
Sheri Jaszkowicz. Sheri is completing her 29th year of teaching with Twinsburg. Her first 10 years were as a teacher with the Cleveland Club of Schools. Her favorite standout memory was doing her first year teaching KPP, PBL, which is the Classroom Project with pets. Her class researched and learned about what would make a good pet. The students voted and a turtle was purchased for the classroom. It was a much greater commitment than she expected, as the turtle was a very picky eater. It wouldn't eat the pellet turtle food. It would only eat live crickets and feeder fish. Poor Sheri was weekly buying those specialty items for the classroom turtle. Christmas break came, and Sheri went into the school to take care of feeding Shelley the turtle. Sheri went into the building using her fob with no knowledge that she had tripped the silent alarm until she saw the police car arriving when she was leaving the building. She explained the situation to the officer, and he had a good laugh. Sheri, however, was not laughing at the time, as she had to call her principal and email Mrs. Powers with an apology. Now, though, she can laugh about the story. Sheri will miss her work family and the students when she retires. She met her best friend, Leanne Here. Sheri loved coming to work every day. She loved working with the little ones. It brings her to tears thinking about leaving. Sheri is certain that in retirement, she will still be busy, not just relaxing. Sheri has already been offered three jobs. She is passionate about working with education students and thinks she may end up at a local university to do that. She also plans to travel. Her daughter lives in California, and she's looking forward to being able to visit whenever she wants.
Congratulations, Sheri. That's gonna be a very hard story to top. Our next candidate for retirement is Mrs. Karen Lindsay, one of our wonderful bus drivers in our transportation department. Karen has been with our district as one of our bus drivers for 31 years. That's an amazing accomplishment. She has too many wonderful memories to choose just one. She will miss the students the most of all. Karen plans to relax and sleep in during her retirement years. Congratulations to Mrs. Karen Lindsay.
Libby Littler. Libby has worked for the district for 31 years as a special education teacher. She has too many memories to single out one out as her most favorite, because all of her memories were favorite. Libby plans to work at a landscaping company in her retirement and enjoy just being outside all the time. Congratulations, Libby.
Our next retiree to celebrate is Mr. Dave Wyrick. Dave has worked for the district for 33 years as an elementary and middle school teacher. He began his career straight out of college. Dave's favorite memory is working with and learning from some truly great teachers. Dave will miss his staff friendships the most. Dave's future plans are still uncertain at this time. However, he hopes to have some sort of a part-time job that allows him some flexible schedule to give him free time to enjoy some of his hobbies. Congratulations to Dave Wyrick.
Nancy Drylin. Nancy Drylin has worked for the district for 35 years as an administrative assistant. She taught business and computers at Archbishop Hoben in Akron for three years and also taught the same at Streetsboro High School for two years. Nancy says her earlier years in education are her best memories. She will miss the staff and students. Nancy plans to enjoy family and free time in her retirement. Congratulations, Nancy.
Our next retiree to celebrate is Mrs. Maureen Stoffer. Maureen is completing her 34th year. That's a huge accomplishment now, 34 years, teaching in our school district. Prior to that, she was a substitute teacher. Maureen also attended Twinsburg City School District from kindergarten through the 12th grade as a student. Maureen says that her memory isn't what it used to be, but her favorite memory is the performance that the students put on each year. Her classes did the 365 days of the year. They would sing educational songs and perform for their families and the school. It was so fun to see how much they could learn and how excited they were. What she will miss most is her health insurance, and she put a smile. But she also will miss her colleagues and the students very much. Also with a smile, she writes, "After completing her therapy sessions," smile, smile, "she plans to travel a little, read a lot, clean a lot, possibly run for an office, and definitely stay involved in education in some capacity." Congratulations to Maureen Stoffer.
Dave Zietlow. Dave has worked for the district, Twinsburg City School District, for 42 years. Most recently has head custodian at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Before coming to Twinsburg, he has had many other jobs: Bedford Hospital, Suburban Hospital, East Ohio Gas, painting for Honky Painting in Hudson, Ohio. He started working at a gas station at 15, then delivered pizzas at age 16. So he's been working quite a while. One of Dave's best memories was when he was coaching JV baseball and had two-on-two, two-on and two-out in the seventh, and with the batter at the plate. He called time and told the player to swing for the fence because that was the only way we would win. The kid pounded the ball over the fence, and his team won the game. Dave will never forget that moment. He will miss the friends and the kids in the district. Dave plans to travel, build a golf green in his backyard, and restore an old truck for his son, then follow his son in baseball. Congratulations, Dave.
Board of Education, as you know, our Class of 2023 is soon graduating from Twinsburg High School, but this class is even more special. Our Class of 2023, these very special staff members who have been so dedicated in their service to the boys and girls here in our community. Please join me in congratulating our Class of 2023 retirees. Okay, it's time for a photo op with our board.
Box is on the table. There you go. And we're gonna ask all the retirees and everybody to just remain because we have one more award, and we'd like you all to be in attendance for this, please. Thank you. Just stand. Yes, please. It is the goal of the Twinsburg City School District to recognize and honor outstanding teachers and support staff members on an annual basis. The designation of Teacher and Support Staff Member of the Year is one such method. The candidates are nominated by their colleagues, and the nominations are then scored by members of the staff. At this time, I would like to present to you the Support Staff Member of the Year. This person has been an instructional assistant at Twinsburg High School for 21 years. When nominating her, her colleagues and principal had this to say: "To say that she goes above and beyond for students is an understatement. Her ability to reach average students is truly amazing. She spends countless hours of her own time working with IEP 504 and other students to ensure that they are learning and completing their work. She schedules Google meets with students in the evenings and on weekends to help them get caught up on missing assignments. When she was out ill, her first worry was about the students and ensuring that they would not fall through the cracks while she was out of school. There is no one that I would rather have on my side and in my classroom. She monitors student grades for classes that she is not assigned to. She holds kids accountable with a mama bear approach, and she is continually giving praise to kids who work hard and achieve some success. She took a struggling student under her wing this quarter because she saw that he was struggling, even though he was not on her case load. With her help, he improved his grade from an F to a C+. The student sought her out to personally thank her for all of her hard work with him, especially since she didn't have to do that. This person is a gem in this district and truly deserves this honor as Support Staff Member of the Year. So, please join me in congratulating Tracy Garvey as the Support Staff Member of the Year. Now, I will present the Teacher of the Year for 2023. This teacher has taught at Twinsburg High School for seven years. Her colleagues and principal had this to say about her: "She is a strong voice in our school and in our community. She has devoted her time to the Black History Club at Twinsburg High School. As a coach, she has supported her athletes and given them positive direction in their sport and in their academic careers. She has taken her students on field trips to Cleveland's Rock and Roll Hall of Fame to gain insight and celebrate the history and cultural significance of rock music. They also traveled to the Black History Museum in Cincinnati, Ohio. She teaches the Black Voices in Literature class, which includes students from all ethnicities. The students in the class are not only learning to feel and hear the passion found in Black voices, they are also relating her teaching to their own background and culture. She uses a variety of creative teaching assignments, like dystopian short stories they each wrote through virtual reality and immersion learning through documentaries. The teacher has won several awards in recognition. She was an Akron Beacon Journal Make the Great Amazing Teacher nominee in 2021, a GAR Educator Initiative grant recipient in 2021, 2022, and 2023. She was a WKYC Educator Station All-Star Teacher Spotlight in 2022, a Martha Holden Jennings Master Teacher Leader Award in 2022, and a Fund for Teacher Fellow in 2023, which comes with a trip to Africa this summer. This teacher describes her philosophy as one that values students and feels that getting to know them as humans first and students second allows for a deeper connection and will make her students work harder to achieve academic success. The encouragement to be loud and wrong over quiet and confused is so ingrained in her classroom climate that the students feel comfortable making mistakes and using them to gain clarity for themselves and their peers. Her attributes are endless, and her value as a teacher in Twinsburg High School is immeasurable. It is my honor to present to you the Twinsburg City School District Teacher of the Year, Danae Pinkney. And just so you all know, the recipients didn't know that was why they were here. They were told something else. Miss Pinkney thought she was presenting something to Mr. Lynn. And her students as well. Thank you, students. Congratulations.
So if we could ask Tracy and Danae and also last year's recipients, Missy and Tiffany, to come forward with a picture for the board, because you don't lose that best of class, right? Missy and Tiffany continue to do amazing things with our students, and of course, we're so proud of Tracy and Danae.
Tracy, hold your word up. Tracy, hold your word up.
I'm gonna make a motion at 7:47 to call a recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Travis, roll call, please. Yes.
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 All right, we're at recess. All right, we're gonna reconvene at 7:54, and we're gonna be in committee report. Do you have any committees to report?
Yes. I have two things. First, the Finance Committee met on the 15th, and we went over the updated five-year forecast, and I know Julia's gonna kind of go over that this evening. But, you know, in general, it's more favorable than we had anticipated for a number of reasons, to which I'll wait for her to do her presentation so that she can explain that. We also went over the Twinsburg Fitness Center agreement with the city of Twinsburg. There are a number of elements that need addressed, and there are some contractual pieces that we needed to discuss and are actually gonna require further discussion that we'll probably schedule in a future work session where the city can kind of come in and go over some of the things that they're wanting to address and ask for so that, you know, we can have an open dialogue with respect to what they want to do. Next, we talked about the permanent improvement expenditures, as well as what we got going on for summer. So I'll look at, you know, what we got going on for summer. We got some asphalt and paving that we're gonna be doing, and we've actually discussed that in prior meetings as well. Buses, replacement of our buses and maintenance of our fleet, also some roofing and some HVAC and wiring as well. Also on the list are some textbooks that we're gonna be purchasing using PI funds, as well as some Chromebooks and possibly cards. Specific to the Chromebooks, the reason that we're able to use PI funds to purchase Chromebooks this year as opposed to prior years is because this year, they're actually coming with a five-year renewal. Yeah, so as opposed to in previous years, it wasn't that much. But because of the number of years that they're able to give us on the Chromebooks, they actually qualify for us to use permanent improvement funds for the purchase of those Chromebooks. So that's what we're gonna be doing with the Chromebooks, as well as looking at some cards as well. Group. And we kind of discussed what was going on at the federal level. Right now, there's not much going on on the congressional level due to what's going on with the debt limit talks right now. So everything is kind of at a standstill with respect to that, but we kind of did a, you know, round the horn to kind of talk about, you know, our contact with our representatives in our respective districts and this is all over the state of Ohio. I represent Northeast Ohio. So everyone has been able to make contact with their representatives and the representatives and senators, including myself. So our representative, 13th Congressional District, is Amelia Strong Sykes, as well as Sherrod Brown, and also Senator Vance. Out of everyone that reported out on their contact and, you know, kind of what they've discussed with their respective representatives, the only representative that was not responsive to anyone was Senator Vance. So we are still working to, with his office, to try and engage him on some of our educational initiatives and platforms that we would like to discuss, but everyone else has been responsive in our discussions. So debt limit was the major issue. Obviously, we want to continue advocating. I've been advocating for special education funds and title funds as well, so we're gonna continue to do that. There is a conference that's gonna be coming up in the fall whereby OSBA funds, they actually pay for the registration. Everything else is out of pocket to whoever's gonna be going. There are two people, I'm one of two people in the Northeast Ohio region that's eligible to go, so I'm not exactly sure whether or not that's something I'm gonna be attending, but if I, you know, if I choose to, I'll make sure that I apprise the board or whatnot. But that's when they actually go to the Hill, make appointments with representatives and senators and go in and, you know, it's usually 15 minutes that you actually get to go in and kind of talk with either the representative or senator or more than likely, an aide. So, but there's an Ohio delegation that's gonna be going as well and there's a, you know, a whole agenda and platform, you know, that they sit down and they talk about and it's over three days. I think from September 26th and 27th, they fly out on the 25th. So nonetheless, if I'm not, if I don't go, I will get an update as to what came out of those visits and hopefully the next time I report out, I'll be able to kind of advise the board of the update of those. So that was it. I just wanted to let you know about that.
All right, thank you. Any other committees? Okay, we're in our administrative report, Thursday night.
Good evening, we're the expectations and health leadership. I will go over the other side of the forecast and summarize quickly what we have. I do have, and you have the part for your presentation. I share the copy with each of you and I send it out to the people numbers. We will post it on the school website tomorrow. Tonight, I will not file my next slide, our presentation, my initiative to New York. I recommend some more of it. Our forecast, we expect next slide increases in revenue since November slash year. Some of the changes in revenues are relying on one, our district valuation went up by over 23 million dollars. Which brings us about 445,000 dollars more per year in state taxes. Line one, two, ten to four percent of property is about 30,000 dollars more than what we expected. I'm sorry, I will come in. Line state foundation, 1.035 and 1.04. The new formula for next four years, probably two, four years, has been passed in the House, but is not in the Senate. From what we're seeing in the numbers, we assume for the forecast that two, six schools will be relying on about 200,000 dollar increase compared to what we have right now for the following years. I would like to inform everybody, this is our final, this is the information that we have at this point in time and as we all know, the forecast changes continuously, but the 200,000 dollar increase in the state foundation revenues are reflected in the forecast and in our assumptions. We will have now most likely until October or if they finalize soon enough, then we won't know exactly where we are. Line 1.06, which is miscellaneous income, is quite a bit high on the estimate. We receive the 167,000 dollar in order provision fund, 101,000 dollars in insurance, which we will use for the money email and it is today, number four. I am very happy to inform the community and as the board knows, we have about over half a million dollars in additional interest for the year due to managing our funds between St. Ohio and Huntington Bank, only as needed to cover payroll and payables. These funds are our liquid monies. They come in from the county, there are tax revenues. They come in twice a year.
I jumped and I took advantage of the high interest rates around 5% back in September after we closed my first month in the district and since then, we have been keeping our funds in the high interest earning account, which brings us the desired revenues. This is a temporary earnings. We didn't know the market is gonna go this way and we just took advantage of it, so that helps us too. Expense size of the forecast, our expenses for payroll, benefits, and purchase services reflect what we were approved by the board and Department of Education for the reduction plan back in February. Due to the compounding effect of the large reduction plan in payroll and benefits starting next year, this forecast is more positive than last November's. However, we will only be able to see the real and final effect of the reduction enforced plan once payroll starts in September. So payroll for school districts, for those of you that are not aware or informed of, we complete our contract year, most pay groups, August to next end of May when the school year starts. However, we pay for that contracted year over the summertime. Therefore, we have expenses in June and the following year, July and August, for the previous year contract payroll. So once we pay out this, pay for this year, the next year, we start the new contract in September and that's when we will really have a better understanding and realization of the exact numbers of the reduction, of the reduction enforced effect. I would like to summarize and to explain that even with the updated forecast, we are looking at negative balances still. Additionally, the forecast doesn't include any pay rate increases beyond next year. We have negotiations coming up and so nothing is included beyond a 2% for 2024. Based on this updated forecast, we are still spending about 6 to 8 million dollars more every year, including this fiscal year '23, than what we received in. So the district does not have a balanced budget. So the current forecast is the result of our hard work to lessen our deficit spending, but yet we don't have a final solution. It hops, so it pushes our timeline out again from '25 to '26, but we don't have a final solution over the difference in the spending. Additionally, in November, fiscal year '26 will come down one year closer, so when the November forecast comes out and goes to Department of Education, they will be looking down at year three for fiscal year '26. We have so far only decreased our deficit spending and we need to continue thinking about increasing our revenue soon or further decrease expenditures, better yet a combination of both in order to stay financially responsible.
Thank you.
So.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, we are now, every month, you have any blue cards?
I do.
Okay, I will read, persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card that was found in the lobby to the treasurer prior to the meeting so they may be recognized by the board president and welcome to make comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the board has had the opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the office of the superintendent. Although there's normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at the board meeting, we will request that comments be limited to five minutes. And each person addressing the board is asked to give his or her name and address and I do have one and this is for Haley Johnson. Okay, if you could come up.
My name is Haley Johnson. Address is 2994 Mathers Way, Twinsburg, Ohio 44087. Five minutes. I think, just to get to the point, the reason why I'm here is because, I'm not sure how much you all are aware, but this past school year for the JV girls basketball team, the basketball coach that we had was not qualified, if I can put it that way. And for example, it became apparent about the sixth, maybe the eighth game in, it became apparent about the sixth, maybe eighth game in, that she hadn't called one timeout. I think you get six timeouts per game, I think, but she hadn't called one. And so we have a daughter who made the JV girls basketball team. So, make a long story short, I had sent about, after the eighth or so game, I had sent emails to Coach Lumen, Mr. Fantone, asking for a parent meeting, multiple emails. Most went unresponded to, the few that did get responded to, the answer was no, we're not doing a parent meeting, but we will meet with your daughter, type of thing. So about the, there was, I think there was 20 games on the roster, probably game 18 around there, maybe before then, we started to notice our daughter's playing time decreased significantly. At one game, there was one particular game where our JV coach did not attend, the assistant varsity coach coached the JV girls and he started her. There was a stark difference there between somebody who has experience and who chose to start her and someone who did not and was sitting her more and more. So around this third or fourth game to the end of the season, when the game was over, it was a home game, when the game was, I think it was a Saturday game, when the game was over and I was already in the concession stand, because I worked the concession stands quite a bit. And I was in there and as she walked by with the students, I took that opportunity to get her attention and ask her for a phone call. And she said, yes, and I said, I don't have your number. I should back up for a second to say, we never got her name, an email address, nothing. We never even got introduced to her. We knew her name, when I say we, I mean all the JV parents. When Coach Lumen, Coach Lumen had a wonderful meeting with us at the beginning of the year, introducing himself to us at the time the JV coach was not chosen, but he told us it was coming. And when we did get the coach, we heard from our kids that they had a new coach. So we had no contact information for her. Multiple times, I had asked, can we have her contact information so I can have a meeting with her? We weren't given that. So I took it upon myself to approach her after the game as she walked by, asked her for a phone call, she said, yes. I said, I don't have your number and she said, get it from Asia, which means nothing to you all, but that's a mutual friend, the family, mutual friend, family friend of ours and hers. And when she said that, I went, forget it. I walked back in the concession stand and as I'm working, a few moments later, she came back out and she stepped in the concession stand and started talking. And I said, let's not talk in here, let's go in the hallway, which is what we did. And we started our discussion there. We, it couldn't have been more than 20 seconds. Mr. Fantone approached, stopped it, told me I was out of line and told her she could leave and she did. And Mr. Fantone and I, from that moment on, we had, we talked further in the hallway. So I'm here today because on February 7th, I was, a letter was mailed to me and on page two of it, it says PC Board of Education Members File. So I presume you all got this letter. I don't, I don't know what PC means, but I did send an email to the Board of Education. I had sent multiple emails to Mrs. Powers. Mrs. Powers did engage with me on a few emails and she made it clear that I was wanting a meeting. I wanted a sit-down meeting with her and Mr. Fantone so we could clear the air. Mr. Fantone said in that hallway to me, I'm glad there are cameras here. And when I asked in my emails, roll the cameras, you will see her walk in, I was told that, and I only knew about the cameras because he said it, he threw it out there. And then I found out the cameras weren't available that day or Ms. Powers would know more about that. But in the letter, it states in here that I encountered, it says January 21st, 2023, you encountered Mr. Brian Fantone. I did not encounter Mr. Fantone. He approached Mrs. Brown, Coach Brown and I. It also says in here that I approached in a very aggressive manner. I asked for a phone call. I knew better than to have a meeting that moment, but when she stepped in to talk to me in the concession stand, I said, okay, let's talk. Then I, it says in here, I inappropriately approached JV Coach Danae Brown while she was coaching our team. The game was over. It was the, it was over and then in the gym, the varsity girls were warming up. The game was over. Then it also says on here. And I said, let's not talk in here, let's go in the hallway, which is what we did. And we started our discussion there. We, it couldn't have been more than 20 seconds. Mr. Fantone approached, stopped it, told me I was out of line, and told her she could leave. And she did. And Mr. Fantone and I, from that moment on, we had, we talked further in the hallway. So, I'm here today because on February 7th, I was, a letter was mailed to me. And on page two of it, it says, PC Board of Education members file. So, I presume you all got this letter. I don't, I don't know what PC means, but I did send an email to the Board of Education. I had sent multiple emails to Mrs. Powers. Mrs. Powers did engage with me on a few emails, and she made it clear that I was wanting a meeting. I wanted a sit-down meeting with her and Mr. Fantone, so we could clear the air. Mr. Fantone said in that hallway to me, I'm glad there are cameras here. And when I asked in my emails, roll the cameras, you will see her walk in. I was told that, and I only knew about the cameras because he said it. He threw it out there. And then I found out the cameras weren't available that day, or Ms. Powers would know more about that. But in the letter, it states in here that I encountered, it says, January 21st, 2023, you encountered Mr. Brian Fantone. I did not encounter Mr. Fantone. He approached Mrs. Brown, Coach Brown and I. It also says in here that I approached in a very aggressive manner. I asked for a phone call. I knew better than to have a meeting that moment. But when she stepped in to talk to me in the concession stand, I said, okay, let's talk. Then I, it says in here, I inappropriately approached JV Coach Siney Brown while she was coaching our team. The game was over. It was the, it was over, and then in the gym, the varsity girls were warming up. The game was over. Then it also says on here, Mrs. Powers did graciously agree to a parent meeting about, before the end of the season. I went to her and asked for a meeting when Mr. Lumen and Mr. Fantone wouldn't have it. She made it happen. And there were about three or four parents in there. But in the, in this letter, it says, it says, during the meeting I hosted on February 2nd, 2022, it says, as we discussed during the meeting I hosted on February 2nd, 2022, I cannot support your disrespectful behavior of JV Coach Brown nor Mr. Fantone. It also states in here that it was witnessed by two parents, or two parents, my aggressive manner. So, what I wanted to say is, is that in that meeting on February 2nd, we never discussed this. This never came up. So, there's just quite a few inaccurate, inaccurate details in here. And I'm just here today because I feel like this, I know Mrs. Powers has mentioned to me in her emails, this is, she kind of alluded to, this is not that big of a deal. We're not saying you can't get on the premises. But I nevertheless felt like I shouldn't have been given this. That's number one. And secondly, I, Mrs. Powers has always sat down with me. Or we've talked on the phone. This one time, she won't. And that's why I'm here.
Well, we're trying to get a better understanding of, of all the times that we've encountered, why a cease and desist letter? Never been violent, never been disrespectful, you know that. Why a cease and desist letter? One detail she didn't give is, we come to find out that we actually are kind of related to this person. So, when we asked the question of why, and can we have a meeting? It was like, okay, contact cousin Asia, that's what it was. And my wife said, okay. She pulled up. But she comes back and she says, now let's have this conversation. She starts to have this conversation. Mr. Fantone is six foot something, you approach my wife. Now, my wife is like, wait. Out of that encounter, it seems like my wife was more aggressive, and we have the cease and desist letter. Not fair. You say that there's cameras, okay, my wife says she has the right to. Show the footage. Now, it's like, well, the cameras don't work. But wait, it must have worked beforehand before you throw it out there. We are very reasonable, respectful people, but we are people that do speak up. My wife and I, and this doesn't sound like a threat, we're not afraid. We feel that we have the right to voice. That's all. Why the cease and desist letter? You finished? You have anything else you want to say?
Is there a fight? Can we have one more minute? Also, in the, I did write an email to you all. After a week went by, I think I sent a follow-up email. I didn't hear from anybody until today, Ms. Crawford reached out. The other thing I wanted to say is, is that I've emailed before even Mr. Curtis in regard, a year ago this time, prom season. I was on the after-prom committee, I had a graduating senior last year. My husband, I'm on PTA, I'm on TAB. I'm, I can't, I'm in the concession stand, we're in the parking lot, jerking the cars, and we have the, we have the football playoff games here. We're involved. We are involved. And so, to not hear from anybody, I don't know, I didn't know what else to do. This is not easy. Seeing all the wonderful teachers recognized today and how much they care about students, but we care about ours too. So, what I wanted to say also is that this time, a year ago last year, being on the after-prom committee my first time, because I had my first senior, and found some things there that seemed off. And when I brought those to Mr. Curtis' attention, Ms. Powers' attention, we spoke, I think, once. After that, didn't hear anything. But one of the things I wanted to, I wanted to, I brought to Mrs. Powers' first attention is that this was our senior, our first senior. The day of prom, I presumed I would call her off, school, out of school that day. I was going to, and take, and gladly take the unexcused absence. I wasn't looking to have it excused. She could take the unexcused. She's not in jeopardy of anything as far as her, as far as her absences were concerned. But then a letter went out from Mr. Fantone saying, any unexcused absence would land in a revoked prom ticket. And I was like, whoa, because I have family and friends who go to Nordenia, who go to Solon. They, their, the parents called them out of school that day.
And we didn't want to lie.
We didn't lie.
That's what you were suggesting.
And she went.
No.
And we, and we were told you could have gotten around that by many people in the district who are very much, who are very much seen. We were told you could get around that, but we didn't. So, she went. But I did write a letter to Ms. Powers and Mr., our principal, and asking about that. And I am told that, that has now been, that got changed this year. I did ask, Mrs. Powers, a letter went out. And I did ask, can I have a copy of the letter? Because the only, if it did get changed, the only reason why it has is because I spoke up. And I'd like to see that something I fought for a year ago actually came to fruition. No response. So, I think those are the two main things that were in my email. And what I'm asking for is for you all to, maybe if you haven't taken the time to read the email, and I'm asking for this to be revoked, or at least ask for you to review the camera and see for yourselves. And it would be nice to sit down with, with Mrs. Powers if we could, and Mr. Fantone if we could. But at the very least, I think I'm just, I didn't deserve it. Thank you for your time.
I just want to make sure, Tom, I just want to make one comment as a person of DEI. We have to be very careful as a black woman to make sure we don't use the label aggressively. As a black woman, that we get labeled that way, and it's very offensive. So, I would just say, that's something to look for when we're looking at DEI and things that we do, like, careful with that language, because it's a trigger for black women who are labeled aggressive like that. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Are there any more blue cards? Okay. We'll move on to K, Treasurer's Recommendation. And I will read. Items K1 and 2. K1, resolve that the Twisburg Board of Education approves and adopts the Twinsburg City School District's five-year forecast and assumptions of the school years 2023 through 2027 as prescribed by RRC 5705.391 and 5705.412. K2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education authorize the Treasurer to make fund transfers and/or adjustments to the general fund as necessary on fiscal year '22, as their entitlement funds as listed in the agenda. Is there a motion for those two items as read? Still move. Move by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Yes. And those two items pass 5-0. Section L, and just confirm, Mrs. Crawford, you want 1, 4, and 5 read together?
Yeah.
Yes?
7.
1, 4, 5, and 7. 1, 4, 5. Any objection? All right. So, L1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RRC background checks. 4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the administrative personnel reductions in staff. 5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RRC background checks. And 7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RRC background checks. Is there a motion for those items as read?
Still move.
Move by Mrs. Travis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis, discussion?
Mr. Pelber, just a reminder that L5 is the revised L5.
Yes, thank you for pointing, that was read into the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes. Yes, and those items as read, pass 5-0. I will now read 2, 3, and 6 together. Right? Okay. 2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the revised classified personnel recall list. 3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the revised certificated licensed personnel recall list. And 7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education, Board of Education accepts the certificated personnel recall list for administrators. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
Second.
Move by Mrs. Travis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis, discussion?
This is just, as we alluded to in the last meeting, there are going to continue to be revisions, shuffling as staff move, whatever the case may be, we have to reexamine the list and things change. So, it requires our Board action when things change. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes, and those items passed.
Mr. Pelber, if I might?
Yes.
I missed an opportunity, and I apologize for that. I wanted to say a few things about our recommendation and now the approval of our new high school principal and assistant principal, as well as a few words about my administrative team who are receiving
Absolutely.
contract renewals tonight.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, it is a pleasure to invite Board of Education to first introduce for the first time our new principal at Twinsburg High School effective August 1st, 2023.
Mrs. Emily Williamson-Hunt, would you join me up here, Emily?
Just a few things about Emily and her career. Move now to this wonderful place that she is. Emily is a graduate of East High School in Cleveland. She received her bachelor's of art degree from Case Western Reserve University and a master's degree in educational administration from Ashland University. She taught for 17 years as an English teacher, and where she was also, worked in the freshman academy. She was a team leader and a department chair, I believe, at Euclid High School. She served as dean of students for three years, and during that time, their school won a bronze award in PBIS. So, this is very important to Mrs. Williamson-Hunt. She's been at our high school for three years. And a little-known fact about something that's been going on behind the scenes that Mrs. Williamson-Hunt has been in charge of is the Kaleidoscope program. The Kaleidoscope program has our students from our high school working with students from Nordenia, as well as Hudson High Schools, working through different projects in the world of diversity, belonging, and inclusiveness. And that was written by a grant that Mrs. Williamson-Hunt co-wrote. Actually, we just heard last week that she was funded by the Gar Foundation for $10,000, and that work will continue into the new year. So, that is a huge feather in your cap. And she has been married to June Hunt for 20 years. Get this one, they have six children, I can't believe this, 11 grandchildren. How do you do that? 11 grandchildren, that's amazing, yes. Her hobbies include, she loves the theater. She's been to see Hamilton three times, enjoys working out, trying not to let the dust settle on her rowing machine. Loves to travel to keep up with her daughter Shereen and her granddaughter Navi in San Diego. And she supports her son Jordan in his traditional college experience at Tuskegee College, Tuskegee University. So, we are delighted that you said yes. And did you want to say a few words to the Board?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. I really am so extremely humbled by this opportunity and thankful. Twinsburg has been a great place to learn how to be an assistant principal, and I'm sure will be a great place for me to learn how to be a building principal. I look forward to working, continuing to work with the staff on things that we have already started on. You know, the blessing is that we all know each other, and we can continue the hard work of supporting our students and being, supporting their success and the staff's success and just coming together collaboratively as a building to just continue, again, the hard work of being a student and being successful in this world. I am just really excited for this opportunity. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your faith and confidence in me. And I will not let you down. I may not always please you, but I will not let you down.
Thank you. Congrats. All right. So, since Mrs. Williamson-Hunt was promoted to the seat of principal, vacated by Mr. Brian Linsari, there was no presentation for you tonight. It got to me here, though, that was great. Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. So, with the seat vacated by Mrs. Williamson-Hunt, I'm delighted to introduce our newest assistant principal at Twinsburg High School, and that is Miss Michelle Loudon. So, Miss Loudon went to Kent State University, where she received her elementary education degree, and she received her master's in educational administration from Ashland University, much like Mrs. Williamson-Hunt. Miss Loudon worked for 11 years at Field Junior High, that's part of the Field Local School District, where she taught science, history, math, ELA, geography, and health. Well-rounded teacher right here. And she also coached girls JV basketball for 10 years, track for nine years, and volleyball for eight years. Then she joined us over at Dodge as our assistant principal, where she served in that role for 10 years. Then switched to being a seventh-grade science teacher at RB Chamberlain Middle School. And then from that role, she became an administrative intern at the middle school, and most recently is a middle school assistant principal. On the personal front, Miss Loudon is the mom of five kids. I can't believe this, five, all these kids, right? Two of who are married, and one, and she has one grandson. She has four children who have graduated from Walsh University. So, very successful family, that's wonderful. And she has one who's a senior there right now. Interesting fact about Miss Loudon, she grew up on a multi-generational farm, and she continues to work there with her family when she's not busy with us here in the school district. She enjoys spending time with her family and her friends, and working out, and biking and hiking and reading, and more outdoor activities. And we are delighted that you also said yes to this new career opportunity. We introduced Miss Loudon and Mrs. Williamson-Hunt as the new leadership team at the high school yesterday, and they were so well-received. We appreciate the support of our staff over at the high school. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to also thank the Board of Education for giving me this opportunity to continue working with the leadership team, and now at the high school. I hope to be a good transition for our kids coming over and making that a smooth transition so that they are successful. I am really looking forward, because once they leave RBC, sometimes it's difficult to keep track of them at the high school. So, it's going to be a wonderful time for me to see them continue their academic successes and to continue to grow in other areas as well. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations to both of you. And so, and next, another call for you. So, also, Board of Education, tonight I want to explain additional changes in leadership that have occurred thanks to your vote this evening. First and foremost, I want to ask Mrs. Farthing to please come forward. Mrs. Farthing, as you know, has been an outstanding curriculum director for many years, probably like 10 or 12, or something like that. And she is a lifelong Twinsburg educator. And you know, Board of Education, when Mr. McGing retired, we have been without somebody at the helm of technology since that retirement. Mr. Strickland has done a great job. Mrs. Farthing has pinched hit, and our tech team has done a great job of putting duct tape on things and making it all work. In the midst of this reduction plan, I didn't feel that bringing on another administrator would be the correct thing to do. And so, after having done the interview process, after coming up with two finalists, it took me a long time to reach this decision, but it, you know, when it doesn't feel right, it's not right. It's like a God wink or something like that, guardian angel on your shoulder. So, we contemplated what should we do. Both of the candidates would have done a great job at the helm of our technology department. But instead of that, I recommended to you, Board of Education, that we would ask Mrs. Farthing now to take on the dual role of Director of Curriculum and Technology. And so, she also said yes. I think you're crazy, but it'll work. Because she has an outstanding staff and a team behind her. So, tonight's on the agenda, you saw Mrs. Farthing's resignation as our Director of Curriculum. I did scare Mrs. I did scare Mrs. Travis. She only saw that part and didn't see the second. She thought you had quit, but no, you didn't. And then this new position. So thank you, Jen. I know you work so hard and I know that you are so intelligent in everything that you do. Our curriculum department has run like a top since you've taken over the helm in my time here. And Matt's done a great job of supporting technology. But I think in the world of we live today, educational technology, instructional technology takes on such a tremendous role. And I think merging the two departments is the right thing to do at this time. So we thank you for saying yes too. So joining Mrs. Farthing, you know that we have an amazing team and we would like to ask Mr. Popovich to come forward.
That's good.
There you go. So Mr. Popovich joined us, was it two years ago now, in the curriculum department and has played an instrumental role in supporting all things curriculum, especially our federal grant programs, especially testing, especially our resident educator program in a lot of other ways. And so in this new reorganization of the curriculum and technology department as one department, Mr. Popovich will take on and assume some of the roles that Mrs. Farthing assumed as the director of technology and curriculum. And so now he, his role has been changed a little bit, but we are very delighted that you remain a partner with Mrs. Farthing and continuing to find work that the two of you did together in curriculum, but now curriculum and technology. So thank you for saying yes as well. And then our last cog in this wheel of curriculum and technology is Mrs. Beth Mariola. If you can join us, come forward. Board of Education, you could remember that back in the day of the beginning of the Chromebook Initiative, when the residents in our community passed the last new money issue, we promised that we would bring on the Chromebooks in this one-to-one initiative. And at that point in time, we recognized that that was a lot of work to roll out technology to support teachers' professional development and all that happened back in those days. And then fast forward, March of 2020 happened and the world changed with the pandemic. We were so fortunate that you said yes to the recommendation to bring Mrs. Mariola onboard as our supervisor of innovative programs at that time. And boy does she innovate. You ask any member of our staff, who is their hero? They're going to say it's Beth Mariola because she's in classrooms helping teachers support technology, doing the right things by our kids. So in the reorganization of our curriculum slash technology department, Mrs. Mariola will take on a new title. Her work will remain some of what she's been doing, but also add additional duties onto what she's been doing, more hands-on with the technology team at the high school. And her new title is supervi-, oh, wait a minute, curriculum and technology supervisor. So almost as long of a title as the one you had before, but more work attached to this one. And so we are absolutely delighted that Mrs. Mariola is remaining a partner with Mrs. Farthing and Mr. Popovich. And I'm quite certain that this department is going to rock and roll and really provide all the supports that we need to ensure that our kids and our staff get what they need to do a good job while they're here on our campus. So that is our reorganized Office of Curriculum and Technology. And thank you very much. So there's that. So also Board of Education, we have renewals of contracts tonight from my admin team and I just wanted to say a few words about that. We'd like to ask Mr. Bandiera to come forward. As you know, Board of Education, Mr. Bandiera joined us last year as our director of pupil services, coming to us from a similar position with the Chardon School District. And I can tell you in his almost a year's time with us, when we have a special education issue, a 504 issue, a complicated situation, we have parents who have questions, I have full confidence that Mr. Bandiera is going to take care of that and do it the very best way that he knows how. He is a true supporter of our students with disabilities, but more than that, also a true supporter of our staff that works with students with disabilities, our 504 population. He is a member of our central office team, has come onboard and done a fantastic job. So I'm proud that you have renewed his contract as our director of pupil services this evening. So thank you for that. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. John Summers to come forward. Mr. Summers is our early-rise administrator, usually here by four, 4:30 every morning. So we're keeping him up late tonight, sorry about that. Mr. Summers joined us a couple of years ago as our maintenance supervisor. And in his time here, I know, Board of Education, you have watched the great things that have happened under his leadership. You all know Christmas Day where Mr. Summers was at Dodge taking care of a flood issue. And that's just not all that he has done. He continues to work with our maintenance staff, taking care of our buildings and our grounds. He's a partner with Mr. Strickland here. They take care of business behind the business of education. He keeps things moving along, makes sure that we are warm, safe, and dry. And it's just my delight to recommend his renewal of his contract as our maintenance supervisor tonight as well. Congratulations. And then finally, the other administrator who's here tonight that we'd like to present is Mr. Mark Desmond. Board of Education, Mark is our transportation supervisor. And as you know, this has been an unprecedented year with struggles with transportation, but not just in our district, but across the state, and I want to say nationally. Mark and his partner Tracy Abbott have done a phenomenal job addressing parent concerns, trying to put together routes that get kids back and forth to school and a lot of activities after school as timely as possible. It has not been an easy year for Mr. Desmond, nor Ms. Abbott, or Mr. Strickland. But the three of them have done a great job of pulling it all together and ensuring that our transportation department is running as expeditiously as it possibly can. As we get into the beginning of summer, the three of them are already looking at the routes, making adjustments, trying to figure out what we can do to eliminate some of the late buses that we continue to have into this end of the school year. And we're pretty confident that with through some adjustments that we've been talking, the transportation situation for our families will be much better into the new school year. Obviously, it's staff-dependent, so they continue to recruit and hopefully we will be able to attract a few more bus drivers as we get our way into the summer months. So thank you, Mark. I know you work really hard. You're here at about 4:30 to his four o'clock. But they are the early birds and just make things happen all the time here in our school district in transportation. So thank you. And then finally, and certainly not least, Mr. Matt Strickland. Matt has been onboard here for just a year. And as you know, he has done a great job as our business manager. Unprecedented year, coming off of COVID, so many things to still worry about in that realm. But more than anything else, safety and security is Matt's bread and butter. It's what he pays attention to. You know, Board, just the last couple of weeks, you know, that we just received about another $291,000 in grant money to be able to buy additional security cameras. That was Matt's work. That on top of what was submitted last year, a half a million dollars now to enhance security here in our school district. It doesn't happen by a wish and a whim, it happens by hard work. And so we thank Matt for that. Matt oversees food service, maintenance, transportation, a little bit of technology in our athletic programs too. So he is a very busy administrator. Again, these gentlemen take care of business behind the business of running our school district. And I'm very grateful and most appreciative to our Board of Education for renewing your contracts this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Favre.
Thank you, and congratulations to all. Thank you for the hard work and especially the hard work to come yet. Now we're going to be in Action Items New Business. You're going to hear from me for items M. 1 through 17, so buckle in. M. 1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory for the attached exhibit. M. 2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation from the RB Chamberlain Middle School and Twinsburg High School PTA in the amount of $700,000 to the food truck in 2023 seniors' last day per the attached exhibit. 3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation from Ohio Pile Print of Pennsylvania to Twinsburg High School in the amount of $78.84 for the sale of Twinsburg apparel at local retails. The donation will be used for miscellaneous instructional supplies per the attached exhibit. 4, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the determination of impracticality of transportation for the below-listed schools and further updates the students for the 2022-2023 school year per the Ohio Department of Education in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 3327.01, listed students kept on file in the Transportation Office. The Board further approves an in lieu of transportation payment of up to $538.55 per student or 122 students for the 2022-23 school year per the Ohio Department of Education. The list is there in the agenda. 5, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves an agreement with Twins Days of Twinsburg, Ohio, who let and lease the Board of Education property at RB Chamberlain Middle School, George D. Dodge Intermediate School, and Twinsburg High School for the annual Twins Day Festival scheduled August 4th through 6th, 2023, sent to the Board under separate cover. 6, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the addendum with the solutions, behavioral health, I'm sorry, solutions behavioral consulting of Macedonia for the remainder of the 2223 school year, not to exceed a total of $17,000. This is general fund, sent to the Board under separate cover. 7, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Twins Education Association for the employment of Michelle Sarek for the .5 preschool teacher position effective 4/17/23 through the remainder of the 2223 school year per the terms of the MOU, as sent to the Board under separate cover. 8, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Twins Support Staff Association for Michelle Sarek's position as a .5 instructional assistant effective 4/17/23 through the remainder of the 2324 school year per the terms in the MOU, as sent to the Board per separate cover. 9, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the ice rink facility use agreement with the City of Garfield Heights Municipal Corporation in Garfield, Ohio for the use of the ice rink and facility for the Twinsburg High School hockey team from the July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Further terms and conditions as set forth in the agreement is sent to the Board under separate cover. 10, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the gymnastics facility use agreement with Jim Rolle of Twinsburg for the use of gymnastics facility for the Twinsburg High School gymnastics team from November 1st, 2023 through March 2nd, 2024, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement is sent to the Board under separate cover. 11, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the bowling facility use agreement with Rose and Lanes of Bedford for the use of the bowling facility for the Twinsburg High School bowling team from September 1st, 2023 through March 9th, 2024, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement is sent to the Board under separate cover. 12, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the tennis facility use agreement with Western Reserve Wreck and Fitness Club of Streetsboro for the use of the tennis facility from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement as sent to the Board under separate cover. 13, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves an agreement between Twins Board of Education and Heartland Payment Systems of Rochester, New York for sixty months beginning 2023-24 school year for the payment processing of student meal accounts as sent to the Board under separate cover. Costs will be based on a per-transaction fees for the funds added to the student's meal account. 14, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the new job description for dean of students as per the attached exhibit. 15, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the memorandum of understanding for the position of dean of students as sent to the Board under separate cover as attached exhibit that one is M. 15. 16, resolve that the Twins Board of Education sets the pay to participate fee for the iceberg club at Twinsburg High School at $8 for the 2023-2024 school year. This fee will be added to the student fee guidelines previously approved for the 2023-2024 school year on May 3rd, 2023. And 17, resolve that the Board of Education approves the overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School track and field team to travel to Columbus, Ohio to participate in the OHSAA State Track and Field Championship meet at the Ohio State University Jesse Owens Stadium, leaving on Thursday, June 1st, 2023, and returning Saturday, June 3rd, 2023. The trip will be funded by the Twinsburg High School School Athletic Department with the assistance from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters as sent to the Board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for those 17 items, Ezra? Move by Mr. Curtis, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Travis. Discussion? Comments? All right. Here, non-roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Favre?
Yes, and those 17 items passed five zero. I'll read the next two without objection. 18, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the purchase of 70 Motorola portable radios with chargers and antennas and capacity plus from BNC Communications of Parma, Ohio, from the Sourcewell Purchasing Consortium contract at the cost of $65,719.50, as sent to the Board under separate cover. This is a safety and security grant expenditure. 19, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the purchase and installation of indoor and outdoor security cameras and FOB access points from Redshift Technology in Meadowburg, from the Omnia Partners Consortium contract at a cost of $68,665, as sent to the Board under separate cover. This is also a safety and security grant expenditure. Do I have a motion for those two items? Move by Mrs. Travis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Comments? Ms. Favre, Mr. Strickland, thank you for hard work here.
Sure. Greatly enhanced. I would like to credit Chad Walker for a big portion of this portion. This was actually on the back of funds that he had applied for last year and we're just seeing that to fruition, so.
Chad Walker legacy. His impact is still being felt. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Favre?
Yes, and those two items passed five zero. We are now at miscellaneous. Are there any comments from my poor colleagues, administrators?
Just congratulations to all the retirees, as well as everyone, you know, with continuing contracts, specifically with the retirees. I always say every year we do this, that when I grow up, I'm nowhere close to being able to do that. But the extent to which folks can retire and go off and do other things and enjoy their lives, travel or spend time with, you know, grandkids or, you know, whatever the case may be. It's always nice that they've been able to do it and finish here in our district, so.
And just, I know it's a really, really busy week at the high school coming up commencement and just very excited, look forward to that every year. So just looking forward to seeing the kids on stage and being able to shake their hand and seeing everybody else on stage celebrating our students graduating.
And tomorrow at the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, we, Board meeting, we will be honoring students from the eight schools, including many from Twinsburg. So hopefully maybe get you a copy of that picture when whoever takes it and honor our Twinsburg graduates that are also going to be graduating from those programs as well.
Yeah, just congratulations to all the renewals of the contracts and all the retirees again. A special shout-out to Mrs. Jane, that's Chance, my youngest son's teacher. So she'll be greatly missed. Want to say we're definitely missing Mr. Lynn as he moves on to another district. You've done great things in this district, so we appreciate all your hard work. But we're excited for the new team to come in as well. So we know that you'll be successful and great as well. And then I just wanted to note that I did submit the Great Expectations Show Choir as well as the symphonic band, as well as the orchestra for the OSBA Conference to perform. So we'll see if they get nominated, if they are selected. They only select five from, you know, from Ohio, so we'll see. But I was like, hey- They only select five from, you know, from Ohio, so we'll see, but I was like, hey, it's better to nominate more to see if we get a greater chance, because they're all doing great things. And then for the Student Achievement Fairs, I'm nominating Iceberg, the minority, and the Block History Club, so we'll see what happens.
Something's bad. Again, just congratulations to our administrative team, the contract renewals, congratulations, Mr. Lynn, you'll be missed, but we'll hear about great things from Lakeview High School. Mrs. Powers, correct me on the number, I was really, really excited to hear the comment you made before the meeting, 352?
352 graduating seniors, and every one of them will pass across the stage.
Isn't that phenomenal?
That's awesome.
That is, that is awesome. That is awesome. An accomplishment to the high school team, but I am all about, it's the pre-K, it's the parents from birth to the 12th grade to get that to happen, so congratulations to the class of 2023.
Right. That's huge, and I just wanted to thank the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, as they have done for the last three years, I think, they are going to be installing with our staff assistants the banner at Twinsburg High School with the photos of all of our students, so that should be up here in the near future, and I know a lot of our graduating seniors like to post in front of it with their families, so that will be posted shortly, I think. We're working behind the scenes to get that.
Thank you. Any further comments? We do have need for executive session.
Yes.
All right, so I will make the motion. The Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:59 to discuss the employment compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. I've made that motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. Travis, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes, and that motion passes 5-0. We are now in executive session, and we do not anticipate further business when we reconvene. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Strickland.